Allison Jacksborough, if you'll rise, I'll ask Mr. Knott for to lead us in prayer. Great to release and pledge.
(inaudible) the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if everyone will sign in. Maybe we thought there may be problems and it looks like there is. There we go. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll? Here he is, he's going inside. That's on the right side. Yeah, if it's okay with the board, if it's okay with the board, we'll do roll calls the rest of the night then. All right, thank you. Next up, recognition of guests, both Mr. Pruevitt and Dr. Robbins will not be here, but Shane Wolfenbarger, the SRO at Campbell County High School is here and he's going to talk to us about text to tip. I believe Gil sent an email out a couple of weeks ago, it was a status report, it was an update on the text to tip, the type of situations they get. So Officer Wolfenbarger, we appreciate you being in here and turn the floor over to you.
All right, thank you guys. With the text to tip program, what I've seen so far, we've done really well with kind of settled down some of the fights. We did have the one bomb threat issue and the boys did that, told on theirself before we got everybody to the church, we figured out who had done it. So I think the, everybody, the word got out on the street real quick that it's nothing to play around with. Several, you know, minor things that, you know, kids dipping in class and or, you know, in the commons or somewhere, we've wrote, I'm sure Mr. Lawson could tell you, we've wrote stacks full of the tobacco citations this year from, you know, just in small time we've had this. I think myself, it's done really well, keeps us informed on, you know, a lot of things at school, we've made some drug busts and different things from it. I think a lot of people were thinking that the bomb threat, we'd had three in the county, all real quick, which everybody all knows about, but only one of those came through text to tip. And that was the one where we had to actually evacuate the school. Does anybody have any questions for me about text to tip?
Um, Mr. Wolfenbarger, have you had anybody that's been ran on for a little lack of work that you all have been managing a little bit?
There's been a couple of times that that's happened and, you know, we've warned everybody in the beginning, if you did that, say it came from your number and you keep doing and everything comes unfounded or whatever, we can block that number, we send it to a spam account and you can't text from that number anymore. So it kind of weeds that out.
Is the middle schools?
Uh, not yet. We're waiting to roll the middle schools out, I'm not sure when we're going to do it, but I have been advised on when we're going to roll the middle schools out.
One more question, is it just individual or you overseeing the program?
Uh, it's pretty much me and then I delegate it out to, if it's at a school, if it's a school situation, you know, if we have an SRO there, which we have, like I've had some at Jellicoe, some situations and I just call Ned directly and tell him or, you know, if it's something in the community, whichever department it goes to, I delegate it to that department. You know, I have the sheriff.
So you're taking the lead?
I take, I pretty much take it, it's just a program that we found in Blount County and it seemed to work. They do it a little bit different than we do because they've got a whole lot more money and capability than we do, but they actually run it through their 911. And then it goes through that and they can, they got, it's unbelievable the things, what they've got it set up. I mean, you do have a few things of like, you know, so and so, it's real minor stuff and then you've had some that some people are going to fight or certain things are going to happen in the school and we've been able to go right to them and stop it before anything happens, so it's worked out real well. To me, the only one I've seen that was bad and caused a lot of trouble was the actual bomb threat situation, which we haven't had anything stupid like that since then. We, I mean, we prosecuted those kids, I mean, to what we, fullest that we could do.
All three of the bomb threats, those, they, in each case, they were prosecuted and, I mean, yeah, with law enforcement, weren't they?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Campbell, do you see any potential liability to this and I know it's wrong and everything, but we be careful with what we're doing.
I actually don't think that you would have any liability because it's, the Secret Service is the one that really promotes this program and it does work and it's the best tool of the law enforcement people have to stop any potential threat, so I think if you're this involved, you don't get any liability.
Any other questions?
I'd say one more thing, to me, I've had, found out things that I probably normally wouldn't have found out because, you know, the kids found out that they, nobody can figure out who's doing it. So they're a little bit more, and plus it's on their level with the technology of text and you can do it on the computer too, so it's in their world to work with it, so.
All right, anything else?
Now, if two kids have a fight at school, what's your role in it?
It just depends upon the severity of the situation. If the school, I mean, you have just a little fistfight from kids or whatever, one day I was in training when we had the severe fight at the high school and boy had to be taken to hospital, stitches and whatnot, but if it's, if the school can take care of it on their level, then we don't step in on that part. I mean, if I'm there, I'll break it up or whatever, but I don't, I don't take them to jail or cite them to court unless there's like serious physical bodily harm.
Whatever actions taken has to be come through the press room.
Yes, sir. I mean, they'll, they'll take care of it and if she sees fit, you know, in my case for Ms. Wheeler, if this, like I said, if the fight's severe enough, then I'll take, you know, then it, the school does their part, then I do my part. Just like on a drug conviction or anything like that, I do my part and then the school, you know, does their side of it too. But there's certain, certain situations where we don't have to get involved, we let the school handle it, you know, on their level and especially with juveniles, if it's an adult, when they usually, which in my case, we have several of those at high school that are, you know, when they're 18, it's a lot different.
You don't have to put out much of a doubt.
No.
All you have to do is tell them, "Go home."
Right. And we have that, you know, I'm learning, we have that luxury, if you, if you're 18, you can't.
You're just as responsible as I am.
Absolutely.
Because of disturbance, you know past.
Exactly. I will say, we had one student at Campbell County High School, turned 18 on January 4th, within two weeks of his birthday, he'd been arrested twice, once by another officer and once by me. So, and he's not, you know, he's, he's gone. So, I think the, you know, in my opinion, when some of the kids, they get sent away to alternative school, get the calendar year, that's pretty good punishment for a small fight or whatever, in my opinion, so. But I will always step in where the school system or principals want us to step in, if they see need, see fit.
Anything else? Thank you Shane, appreciate it.
All right, thank you guys.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the consign agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Burge, is there a second? Second by Mr. Rutherford, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Harper?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Collins?
Ray Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Yorin?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, item four, approval of the regular agenda. I need to, of course, there's an addendum, there's the addendum there, and also I need to take off item, under items for action number B. Yeah, consider designating $10,000 for LaFolte Middle School Football Field Irrigation System, I'm taking that off the agenda and so the addendum then, the donation to Jellicoe Elementary School Softball Team will be AC. So with those, with the changes in the addendum, what's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Orks, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Creekmore, any discussion?
I got a letter from the band director, Campbell County High School asking for a donation. I didn't get it on here, but I, I'm in favor of that and is it too late to put something on the agenda?
Well, I think, yeah, I think there would be, I think Director Poston is going to make some comments here under his report about some, about finances. About some finances and so, yeah, so. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Harper?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Collins?
Ray Moore?
Yes.
Yorin?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Yorin?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Comments from the chair, I'll draw your attention to the ROTC invitation here, it's for the Military Ball, the Campbell County High School ROTC Military Ball, April the 20th, down at Cove Lake State Park and just be sure if you can go to let them know the RSVP date and the phone numbers on there. So, that's all I have. Next up, our directors monthly report, Director Poston.
Of course, a big thing coming down the pipe this month, week of April the 27th, we're at TCAP week and teachers and principals, everyone's working real hard to get ready for that week and I believe we're going to have a pretty good week, at least I hope so. I know next year will be the last year for TCAPS, things are changing and it's a director's meeting today and they were talking about some of those major changes that are coming our way. Some of them kind of racking in some ways, a lot of planning is taking place to get us out of it. The U.S. Commissioner is recently in the state and talking about many of the changes in the state of Tennessee. We're on the forefront of a lot of, a lot of initiatives and time will tell how many of these are working, how many are not, I'm sure things will change as they do in education, but a lot of the common core training that they're going through now, in fact, we have quite a few teachers ready to take additional training this summer. I think we want to see additional changes taking place over the next few months and years and hopefully it will benefit the children, that's, that's our hope and it's our goal. One of the things that, let me mention a couple of these parts, but on April the 20th, there's a group of parents here in the county that just learned this yesterday, it's a drive-through tip, they're doing a walk and it's going to start at Jacksborough Middle School and go down to Cove Lake, it's autism awareness and it's going to start on April the 20th at 10:00 a.m. And they're hoping to bring some awareness to the issue of autism and hopefully raise some money to put iPads and some of the computer programs in the hands of these children. Those of you that know anything at all about autism, I know there's a lot of children that benefit from the use of some of new technology and computers, so I wish them well and encourage if you're interested in having them, that's on Saturday, April 20th, you know, at 10:00 a.m. Also, last month, you, we discussed the driver's head program, it's now in place as a private driver's head program in the county, they're using, is it civil here or what? Park commodity building there, quite a few young folks in this, in this system or this county are already taking advantage of that. My understanding, they're going to go to Jellicoe too, use an area over there for the driver's head program, so that's been taken care of. One of the things that I wonder, I mentioned to Mr. Josh just a few moments ago, of course, we just got our DEP tested yesterday, so those have changed, we'll get probably two or three more reports on those in the next three or four months and we've been doing a lot of in-house talking about some of the budget. But we still have several little projects that are out there. I really would like to see us have a workshop, if at all possible, to discuss not only the best use of these funds, capital, I've got about 144,000 capital outlets and some projects that have been, and I know Mr. Lawson just mentioned one back there, Van, I'd like to get Charles to put on some things you'd like to see in the budget next year and also go caution for when on how we can best use these funds that we've got now to finish up this year. We've got several projects that we want, we want to finish up and run good wisely and I would hope that you will consider a workshop to look at some of it.
Um, the capital outlet is beyond the car payment, they're on this year.
Yeah, everything, all those, yeah, all of those things are still, they're standing out there, we, most of those things have architect, and that's one we don't have to be considered bringing in an architect down, down the size of the project. That's, that's like, that's one that I'm thinking of. Use what we've got wisely. I know that this is going to be a major budget year, our numbers have continually declined and the number of students that we have in the county, we're looking at the possibility for another decrease of around 70 kids, 70, 80 kids over last year's ADM, so that's going to fail, of course, we do know that there's a 1% increase that's, that looks like it's going to come out or come our way with the state. Still a lot of things have not been approved at the state, they're still in session down there. There's issues dealing with our security, we'd like, we'd like to get some work done on resource officers, I see some additional resource officers, I like to see our buildings product and standards, we're very safe as they can be, we're talking about that, and so we need to be, use what we've got wisely and then maybe in the next few days, we'll hear from the state on what we're going to get from them to help in some of those issues. That's pretty much the main thing that I'm going to mention tonight, my report, but I would encourage you to request and work on it.
What about, well, Director Poston would like for it to happen in the next couple of weeks. What about the 23rd, two weeks from tonight? Five o'clock? Junior, agree with that?
(inaudible).
Sarge? Mr. Burge? So, Tomer? Director's at here with you? Okay. So we'll schedule that budget workshop then on Tuesday night, April the 23rd at 6:00 and Gil, if you'll see if the courthouse is available and send the email out and issue the proper notices then to meet, so. Yeah, yeah, financial, I mean, yeah, y'all are invited, if you'll let Jeff know and so. And even though none of them's here, I would encourage the commissioners to come, you know, they've got to sign off on it and when we meet with Director Poston, I would urge us, you know, be bold in what we request, you know, I can't think of anything more important than education in our county, so I'm, you know, I'm willing to stand up and take an unpopular stance and take the, the public beating out there to improve our school system and so I would encourage the rest of us as a board to be bold in our approach and to keep in mind that we have about 5, 500 kids out there depending on it. So, thank you, Mr. Poston. Next up, recognize the Department of Finance. Karen? Good to see you tonight, you're recognized.
The first thing is the monthly financial. We have financials in the month of February 2013. In the 141 million purpose school fund, cash with the trustee is $8,345,680. Revenues are at 66.9% and expenditures are at 61.9%. In the 142 school federal organs fund, cash with the trustee is $321,978. Revenues are at 57.3%, expenditures at 56.9%. In the 143 central cafeteria fund, we have cash with the trustee at $442,924. Revenues are at 64.9% and expenditures are at 65.9%.
What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Orks to approve the financial report for all three funds, is there a second? Second by Mr. Rutherford, discussion? Karen, I want to ask about the central cafeteria fund, it seems like the revenues and expenditures have come closer together, is that due to the $60,000 transfer in from last month or is that just from?
Actually, the transfer hasn't happened.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Where are we at with collections? Vicky here?
Nope.
Okay.
I'd like to comment on that, never mind, I'd like to see in the future that they come here before they go to the wire firm. I think that was talked about on Monday night, pretty much committed to, it was brought to us on Tuesday night. And it's always been approved, they'll learn, they'll be down there, I don't understand how the process can get ahead of itself, that's what happened. They thought they took it to the county commission first and they brought it to us. My understanding.
The, the thing is, is we have got to get a colle, we've got to get a policy in place on how they're going to collect these charges. I mean, we need something in place so we don't have these transfers in, you know, like you all were talking about, you know, we've got, we've got to have a policy to collect these debts.
Something that I've asked for several months now, Vicky keeps saying that she's checking on it and going to get with Jeff on it, is a, a process of credit cards, debit cards, been able to collect this stuff when they're making, if they're making phone calls to try to collect these, these charges, if they can take this, take it over the phone right then, or if there's a system to where the parents can come in and swap the card, we don't have anything like that and surrounding areas do, I've had several parents ask me if we could do that, because it would make it a heck of a lot easier on them. I've had a couple ask me if they could actually go online and do it, that may be a little far out, but I don't know why we can't take some type of charge card as, as paid, we need to, that needs to really be looked into because there's going to be fees with it, of course, but I think that your collections, I think you'd see an upswing in your collections if you would offer some type of plastic collection to some of these lunch charges, because I think we're missing out when we're having to write off, we end up having to write off $30,000, $40,000 again this year like we did last year, then something's got to be changed.
If you look at it, that's half a cent on property tax.
Do we have any limit share how much kid can accumulate in charges? I mean, you can see that coming if he starts charging it per year, I know you want to feed everybody, but that's what free lunches are for, if they can't afford their lunches. Anybody that qualifies as being financially unable to pay for the lunches can get a free lunch. Now, these charges are just, where does, what, what does all that come from?
I'd say there's been someone, they've carried off.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. When I was at the high school, two doctor's kids had them a free lunch card, you know, they were doctor's children. Some of that stuff now is just lack of follow-up and I'm not trying to knock kids out, now, you set a restriction, somebody's going to say, "Oh, Lawson's against everybody in the county eating." I don't care if the kid's eating, they ought to be fed, but if you qualify for a free lunch, you can get it. And if you can't qualify for a free lunch, you ought to pay for it. And there's no sense in letting this build up that far. Now, you can set a limit, I mean, if a kid comes in that day and he forgot his lunch money, I think y'all let him charge, but if he's charged for three months straight and never does pay and at the end of the year he doesn't pay, now that, that's not teaching the children the right things, I don't think it is.
Dale, what are y'all doing in Anderson County?
We do a lot of what Scott says, is that each kid has a bill, a code, and then at the beginning of the semester, they either can get a credit card or put money on their code, they don't carry the actual card, like my daughter has a six-digit code and when she goes up to the thing, she reads off her code number and if her balance gets down to zero, if they even get down to zero, they get a letter sent home and says, "It's zero, you need to put $50 back off it," and they can call it the credit card number or they send however much they want to and then as soon as it gets zero, they're notified, "Hey, you got a credit."
Okay, suppose they don't do anything about that when it reaches zero?
We, we're probably.
Okay, what do you all do now to say, "Okay, if it reaches zero and you don't have any money," do you say you can't eat it alone?
They, is if it reaches zero, they feed it and then if it goes on for like a week and they've not been, done something to do it, then our attorney will contact them and say, "Your child has now incurred a balance, how do you plan on paying the balance?" They'll work with the families, but then we have mandatory, on signing up the people on the free lunch program, we want, we have a couple of schools that aren't Title I schools and we want the money, so we have incentive programs to get everybody signed up, so like every child gets the form and then we identify the kids and we call them up, the teachers call them the phone and says, "This will help our school, this will help you, there's nothing to be ashamed of." They don't show a free lunch card, their phone, nobody knows.
I understand.
Yeah, so, we collect, we don't let it get much over $20, $30 before they'll start taking it.
That's what I was, that's what we need. We need a system and we need to feed the kids and be reasonable, but now, a dead beach, a dead beach and if I owe something, I'll have to pay it. If I've got the money to pay it and if I'm capable of paying, I guess I get on some sort of a program.
I think Vicky has said before, you know, with charges, well, they get the basic lunch, but they don't do the a la carte though and so, you know, but, you know, it's like Dale said, you know, what they do down there, we've got to, you know, a lot of our schools, we need to do a better job of promoting the, the free lunch program, the free reduced program, we need to, I think, number one, it helps the school because it gets the school knowing the parents a lot better and you get the parents involved, you know, you got the parents, you know, talking to the people at the school and inquiring more about the school and stuff, so I think we've got to start doing a better job of that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Poston, it was also quoted in the paper at that commission meeting and we were looking at 100 meals a day at Campbell County High School, probably an hour lunch per person. Our finance director said there's no possible way that you can feed 1,300 kids in a house. Are we addressing those?
I know Vicky was looking at that, she's not familiar with the status of local, she's wondering about adding another key off or something.
We hear this stuff in the paper and we hear it from a county commission meeting and then the few, united in the year, we get a budget minute slapped across the desk of $60,000 and they don't discuss it about it, it's school board, I find that ironic, that they discuss it at the county commission meeting and you get all these details from the finance director and we don't know anything about it, we have to read it from the paper.
You know, I, you know, the, the folks I talked to at the school, still the high school, they, they think the hour lunch works, you know, from, I mean, you talk to the people up there on the ground, they say it works. Yeah, it's busy the first 30 minutes, but that's why you've got the other 30 minutes and, you know, so, you know, there's, but that's something that we've got to address for sure.
Well, that's another case, we hire the principal and those administrators at the high school and this staff here to run the schools. And if they feel comfortable with that hour schedule, that's fine. It's not the finance director and the county commission's business to tell us how many, minutes we can have for a lunch program. I believe that's right. You're right.
Any further discussion on the, on the financial reports? Madam Clerk, call the roll. Yes. Yes.
Collins? Craig Moore?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes. Yes. Karen, the budget amendments.
Okay, um, I'll avail the budget amendment in the time that there's eight to be presented tonight.
If you'll just give us a description of each budget amendment, Karen, and then we'll try to take them in blocks. So if you'll just give us the description of each one, then--
Okay. On Resolution 4-1, it has been changes within the state children program, a fund of being reconciled to the pre-grant budget to meet operational needs.
Yeah, keep going and we'll try to do them all, we'll, we'll try to approve them all at the same time.
On Resolution 4-2, the school system sees more state funds than anticipated for the ACT test in the hall centers, O-322. And these funds are being appropriated for use in the need of this to provide funding for students being educated and new facilities. Resolution 4-3, the I-3 staff development program funding provided by Georgia State University is later than originally anticipated and these funds are being appropriated for use to provide substitute teachers to allow the regular teachers to attend staff development events. Resolution 4-4, a career ladder extended contract program will receive less revenue than estimated from 2012 through 2015. However, the program received more than anticipated in prior 2011, 12 fiscal year with the doling and exit fund falling into equity and restricted from program use. With these funds now being appropriated, will look to decrease in estimated revenue. Resolution 4-5, one of the nursing personnel change their R and status which is compensated at a higher salary than LTM and personnel funds are being realigned accordingly. Resolution 4-6, it is a desire to provide for student tour, touring and Title I I funds are being realigned accordingly. Resolution 4-7, it is a desire to realign middle-class funds for in-service staff development to the structural and material. And Resolution 4-8, the need for special education contract services was less than anticipated and the state has approved realignment of funds for professional computers and pre-nerds needs to be increased online.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Can I add a couple of questions?
Sure.
Two, two, I was asking, is that, 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 maybe one on the certain--
What they do with Title I I, they set aside, they, they, they use for student and that people who are school, with over, they were, they include ninety-seven, twelve, three, seven, eight, nine.
And the computers that they prescribe, that's just applied?
See, we're going, that's just the beginning, of course, we're going to comply on that. That's fun, it's become a, it's a, it's a question.
What's the pleasure of the board? Is there a motion to approve?
Sooner.
Resolutions 4-1 through 4-8. Motion by Mr. Burge, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill, any further discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll. Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Craig Moore?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes. Yes. Karen, is that it?
It's it.
All right, we should, we appreciate you, thank you so much. Next up, section eight, items for action. Item A, discuss and take necessary action regarding the Campbell County Board of Education, rates of reimbursement and travel expense. Donnie, do you want to touch on that? Richard, can you give us a rundown on that, on the reimbursement and travel expenses? Do you know? I think it was broad, I think the, the crux of it was, and Donnie, you or Gail, correct me if I'm wrong, the crux of it was, was when these grants come in, like Race to the Top Money, I think Tennessee, the Tennessee Achieves Program, Europe, things like that, when they go to these professional development conferences out of state, then they're having a problem being reimbursed for the full use, for the full hotel motel fees because our policy limits them to $150 a night. There's certain cities specified for $250 a night. Those cities are New York City, Washington DC, Chicago, Los Angeles, and San Francisco. Those, the, the expenses, $250 a night plus tax in our policy and it says all other cities, $150. And so I think the crux of it was, is a lot getting that maybe bumped up to $250 as well so that it's easier for the folks who are going through these grants and these, for this professional development to, to be reimbursed for their expenses. Is that, that's pretty much the crux of it, I believe. Pam, I know a lot of the grants are coming through you, is that--
Yeah, they have different meaning, school, the conferences, like if any Seattle, Washington, or Tampa, wherever, you're required to go and, you know, you just have to stay real close and sometimes that's why, that is, we try to do it as cheaply as we can and they usually box off, uh, a room or rings and they do it cheaper than you want to do that still is, is what--
Any questions on this? Would there be a motion to take that, all other cities up to, I mean, what, Pam, you see a lot of this stuff comes through your department, what's the, I mean, what would be the right number to, I mean?
Usually it's mid to maybe that, sometimes it's less, sometimes it's a little, it's really just varies.
Lisa, you and Richard, this would bring, this would bring us into compliance with our board policy and that way it would go over smooth over, over at Finance then, if we change this then. What's the current situation? There's a, there's a conference now, I believe, it's, or a professional development. Is it?
I think there are ones that still in the summer, Common Core, they're only $200 in studies, in studies, and they're having, that's only rooms that they have, so--
It's in Nashville.
It's in Nashville, it's $200. A hundred fifty is what we have a limit on that.
And on that, Mr. Parker, what we want to do is definitely bring, so we can fit two in a ring and we're usually good and Mommy is okay with that. But if it's a male going, you know, there are times that we can't fit two in a room. So, in those cases, we have to, we have to help ourselves.
And this, and 99%, if not 100%, it's, it's travel money that is provided for within the grant itself. So, so would there be a motion to bring that figure to $250, $250 plus tax a night? Make a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Hill, is there a second?
Did you say this is from the grant, grant money?
Most of, yeah, most of the, most of the work, most of the money that the travel, most of the travel is provided for in the grant. So, yeah, Richard, I'm sorry. And if it's not approved, then if someone's going on a, a professional development in Tampa, Florida, the room's $250 a night, then they're only reimbursed up to $150 and then they eat the other hundred. That's, that's--
You ever negotiate these rates?
Yeah.
That's why we--
Sometimes, you know, if they, you go to one of these meetings and there's a whole group going and the ordinary rate there may be $200, but you're taking eight or 10 and you call and kind of negotiate, why, they try to hit these government entities pretty high, you know, because they feel like, well, we'll just hit them for all we get. And do we ever negotiate any?
Yes, most of the time what they do is discount the registration fee, not the registration fee. So we do get discounted when we send several people, but it's on registration.
Have we had employees to cover the difference in the past?
Actually, I went to a conference and it went through. I don't know.
All right, I'll see.
I don't know if anybody covered it or not. I know there was a, there was a question and it may have been, it may have been Gail Stanley, I'm not sure, but there was a question of one coming up and she was going to have to cover the rest for sure.
Mr. Chairman, is this going to relate to all out-of-state, out-of-state travel? Do you need to give you now $250?
Yes, it would be all, yeah, all--
They can get a room for $150. They can get a room now for the passage, $250 in order to work there.
No, the, the rate will be, whatever the rate is, is recognized. I mean, if they, if they go out of state and the rate's 175, then we may have it approved in our policy for $250, but they're still only being reimbursed for 175, whatever the actual cost of the room is. They're, they're not, they're, they, they charge it, they charge it on their own card, right?
But I mean, whose discretion is going to be to get that room? In other words, if we make it across the border, any, anywhere outside of state and they can get a room for 175, who's going to know the third one? If they can go up to $250, why don't they get a $250 room? We got different kinds of rooms in the middle of the table. What I'm saying is, how do you want to make sure that's not being hacked?
We have to, every time someone goes on a trip, we have to have miles, state rate, everything's in the pack. And we have to check everything off.
Okay, so it's in the pack.
They check it, it's finance too. It's, it's not like--
So the rates are there written back?
Yeah.
These are all pre-approved.
Right. It's like you mentioned, Ben Coe, about negotiating rates. I had to do that, you know, pay it and they work. See, not everybody will, but most of them will. Like when the hotel is filled, uh, staff's looking, no more rooms whatsoever, uh, most of them will give that state rate if they did, if it's our close friend.
So, so the motion by Mr. Hill is $250 a night for all, for everything outside the state. That's the motion, that's the second. Now, we've got the in-state issue that Sharon was alluding to, the in-state. The in, the current in-state cap is $150. And like Sharon just said, the Common Core has to go to Nashville and those rooms are, those prices are $200 a night. And so would there, I mean, what? Let's dispose of the out-of-state first. We've got a motion and a second on the end. Madam Clerk, is there any further discussion on the out-of-state? Taking it to $250. Madam Clerk, call the roll. Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Craig Moore?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes. Yes. Now, on the in-state, as you can see in the packet, under the in-state rates, Nashville, Chattanooga, Knoxville, Memphis, and Sevier County, it's $150 a night plus tax. So I think the recommendation would be to take that to $200 a night so that we can come in line. I mean, I, I'm coming up with numbers. I don't book the rooms. I mean, I need some input from our supervisors here. I mean, what, what works?
What we do when we book the room, basically, it's usually the registration, sometimes some meals are included and the hotel fee, and they just send one slice for that. And a hotel will walk off of your rooms for that conference, for that special price, which is usually lower than their normal price. A lot of the places they have conferences are larger venues, like the Auckland Hotel, where they can actually have a conference and a hotel at the same place. And the prices have just gone up, I mean, due to years, it's just been one of those just increases.
Yep, Lisa?
I know the last conference that you all went to in Nashville, I know Gail made, I don't know how many calls trying to find you all a hotel because it was up to $150. And they're ever dealing with something going on in Nashville. And I know she finally, after calling one hotel back and forth, I don't know how many times, even like Vegas, it reduced the rates, she finally got the rates down, just so that you all go to conferences and shoot there in Nashville. So there has been a lot of big, uh, issues.
Gail, would $250 be adequate? I mean, you, you, you book a lot of the travel. Would there be a motion to change the--
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr.--
$250 instead.
All right, second, motion by Mr. Miller, second, by Mr. Creepmore. Yeah.
I would hope, you know, we're living in a day now, you get on screen, see people in the brewery, you explore, a lot of that, cut down a lot of the travel. And can this in, in-county traffic? I mean, I know you have to go to all these schools, but I hope we just don't, I mean, we're in bad budget here this year. I mean, I hope that we don't make, you know, we cut back, there's quite a bit of money spent on traveling inside of camp, but all yours is five.
Yeah. Go back a little, you're still having a fire. I should have said, we're way down. We're way down.
How much do you have thus?
What's, Rick, you know, that family that we have on the trip?
I know it's for everybody that travels, just getting ready to call me. We have like, I would say $10,000, $200, that's pretty much, I mean, everybody has where that's for. If we go to a conference, um, really, we have to do all that in conference, $10,000.
$10,000, $12,000, you're hoping for a lot?
No, it's pretty tight one.
Very, very.
Everybody comes down.
It's in, but--
Yeah.
It's a little higher.
No, we, it's not, the regular program line item that we work out, that's the one I'm speaking out of.
I want to check it, I've seen.
I was just saying, it's a little high for you. The people are line item that I work out of, that we work out of.
You're talking about the checks that you all turn in every week, they're reimbursable or once a month, every one of the state.
Now--
You're saying that it all accumulates to $10,000, Bob?
Totally, you're not, you're just like a now, sixty--
Mr. Terry, it in the in-county travel is counting about $40,000. Didn't you, don't you run out about this time every year, you have to pull a little more back in? And you start out at about $25,000, $30,000?
No. You can come look at one of them.
I've got copies of every check.
Well, going there and I, I wish I had my bag here because it's really not important to that.
Lady lady. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to bring it up because we are in town's budget and I just would hope that we, you know, I know a lot of these grant monies and spend it, but we get beat up sometimes when you hear all these trips and I know a lot of this money that's fake.
Well, and I would hope with us, with the board taking the actions now, have gone out and approving this, I would hope there would be more scrutiny, you know, making sure we are getting our, our, our very level best. And I know, I know that y'all will do that, but I would encourage that. So any further discussion? We've got a motion and a second.
So both will be set at $250?
Yeah, so we'll have out-of-state at $250 and in-state at $250. Madam Clerk? Yeah, Madam Clerk, yeah, I'm sorry, Lisa.
And all cities in, in--
All cities in-state.
Two cities, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Ford?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Craig Moore?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Next up, item A B, approved structural engineering and construction services for Michael Brady Incorporated for structural repair at Campbell County High School. That was in your packet. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Burge, discussion. This is funded, of course, we took $50,000 out several months ago. I think the, the original analysis-- I think the, the original analysis director was, what, eighty-eight thousand, something, and so this money will be paid for out of that, so it's not even new money.
Should have paid it in my own plans, and that's it.
Even after this is done?
Even after this.
Yeah.
This is for the analysis that they did? Yes, what, no...
This is for the repair?
This is for the, what they'll do is they'll compile the scope of work and analysis for the contractors to be, so that we will know what it will cost to do the other part.
So what are we paying them to do this?
Thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two five.
And it's already in that fifty we approved some months ago. Remember, we had a length discussion, that we're going to, that we're going to transfer fifty-five.
Eighty.
And out of the fifty, there's forty-two left?
Excuse me?
Forty-two left out of fifty.
Roughly. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Pardon?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, the last item under items for action, consider approving twenty-five hundred dollar donation to the Jellico Elementary School softball team. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion.
Motion by Vice Chairman Creedmore, second by Mr. Collins, any discussion? Ready to vote? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Pardon?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Creedmore?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Wilson?
Next up, items for discussion, discuss progress on twenty thirteen fourteen school year budget, and we've talked about that and with the workshop. Again, that workshop will be two weeks from tonight, on the twenty-third, at six o'clock here at the courthouse. Discuss Campbell County High School football bleachers.
Mr. Chairman, Bill, I need you to, I saw where we got an email, where there was a court case that said that you do not keep up with your facilities, or you know that you have to down the negative. The award, the award to the chairman of the case, I found it in the, in the U.S. Department of Commerce, and he gives a situation, player, or person, document, or, on a hole that this day, or somebody does something after they've heard this, actually, built in, and an individual just by heard walking and feeling. Always before the law intensifies, and then the building, or you think that unless it is open, or there's danger of movement, and you expect, for the U.S. case, that if you're going to have any sort of athletic facility, or facility for college school people, or if you're allowed to go on it, you have to be, to expect, or there's somebody, or a creature, or a hole, or something that bothers people, that you weren't aware of, or, you still have knowledge of, you still know about what you're aware of. So it is a pretty difficult picture. You know, you're not sure. Other things, there's a vision, a lot of your, at the house, there's barriers there that can happen. Well, without just coming out and saying the dangers, we need to address that, because I would hope that you could make, or, if there is a way that you can do it, by, they can return concrete now, buy surface product that will adhere to that, where you've got polymer coming up, and when I read this, it really kind of, kind of brought to my attention. You know, you got a lot of people on us down there, there's similarities up there. And this would get to your sidewalk, to make sure that you don't have a difference, or, I think it's a big difference in the spaces between the sidewalks, or the assholes coming in, or the, we said, oh, maybe, maybe Mr. Bruce should look in the math and see if we...
Well, we need a, we need...
I know that the coaches have kind of looked at some companies, tried to get the surface, I don't know how far I'm going to go on, but I would hope that we would be very vigilant with it.
Well, not just the concrete, but I mean, there's, I mean, there's no wheelchair access. And I mean, that's been one thing, we need to address that quickly, because that's not good. All right. Discuss legal matters.
Just have one thing that I need y'all to take action on. In our case involving the forty-three CQ from the EFC, I was contacted by them today, and they are requesting the informed mediation. That's usually a sign that the EFC is, is refining the bank for us, and if they're not doing this year, pause that. So it's a very positive sign. We don't have to do anything with mediation, we don't have to participate, but usually it's a good sign, the EFC is safe, we talk with them. The only action I need to pay is to authorize Dean, Mr. Oshman, or his representative to participate in the mediation. We obviously aren't going to make any concessions that are monetary in nature, that satisfy the EFC's concern, that we're addressing the employees' concern, but I feel it's a very positive sign that this, they got our response, that all of y'all have got the copy out. I think it was pretty thorough response, the coaches had a good job, they helped to get that information there. So you would just, I would request that you take action, authorize the meeting with the director to participate in the informed mediation with the EFC.
Second. Second by Mr. Hill, discussion, call the roll.
Pardon?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Creedmore?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Yeah. That's all I have. Rachel, ask a woman, Mr. Collins? Do you?
Just one thing, when we have our workshop on the budget, I hope that we can discuss this and ask questions that laypeople can understand. Sometimes we sit and listen to thirty-minute rendition as to why we can't do this, why we can't do that. They wire you out, you get why you asked the question in the first class. And it's the responsibility of the chairman of the board, and the director of school, to inform the rest of the board what's going on. So I'd appreciate if we could get some information that'd be worthwhile listening to.
Same words. Thanks.
Now, thank you. Mr. Hill? Come on.
I just have a, just like wish you a happy birthday to Ann Culver. She was a teacher in our school system for many years. She turned a hundred, actually, so I call her the granny of Jellico, but she's, she's a real sweet lady.
First? Quick, quick, two more. Remaining quick things. Mr. Poston, we had a guy that came in, you know, a couple of months ago about the lights issue, Chairman. The lights at the alternative school have never went off on the outside since the building was done last September. It's just, I don't know what else to do. Maintenance has been aware of it several times. And also, I'd like to see, sort of a possibility, we can get some bids on mowing and cleaning of the sidewalk. That's all possible.
All right. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I wish to adjourn.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Go watch Connecticut, be a little...